Okay, Peg, would you say the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you want to ask your question again, Tammy, see if anybody else is in?
Oh, I forgot my, shoot, I was just wanting to know, oh, he's not there anymore. If anybody else is on the screen that would like to tell us their name?
Please do. The first thing I want to do is get out of the way. Do you want to lead the board's organization the way it is?
I'd make a motion we do if we can.
Doesn't matter to me.
It works really well that way unless people want to try the new things. We all know the jobs we're in, so I think it works really well.
I'll second that. Paul?
I just want to make sure. I don't want to be dictating. Okay, I'll say aye. Peg?
Aye.
Emily?
Doug, you don't mind being chair again?
No, I don't mind.
I have for me then.
Emily does not appear to be around.
Emily? You frozen?
Where's Melissa?
I don't know. Where's Melissa?
I don't know.
I think we lost two people.
We can see Emily, but she's not breathing anymore. Okay, she's there.
See, Emily's there? Did she, did you vote yes, Emily?
No, she's really not there.
I heard her say a motion. Nothing about a motion.
I heard a motion not to, so I think she does not agree. But I didn't hear it all.
Well, I don't know what to do then with that vote. Are you yes or no? Can you hold it up?
She's frozen. Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
She can put it in the chat.
I'm sorry?
She can put it in the chat.
Chat?
Yes, you write something.
She wrote no. She just came up no.
Did anybody, everybody got this with their phone?
Okay, so Emily just said she did not want to be on the budget committee.
Paul? Okay, oh, well, nobody don't mind. I'll be the second person.
Okay.
Does she vote yes on everything else?
Can you hear me?
The motion was to keep everything the same, so I think that's why she voted no.
Yeah, she says she does not want to be on the budget committee.
Well?
No.
Okay.
And she's asking if we would like her to be on another one?
What would she, what would she like? She thinks she's going to stay on the policy?
Sounds like she's doing Morse code.
I know.
I'll go to the budget committee if the board doesn't mind.
I'm fine with that. She's fine being on policy still.
Oh, yeah, I'm right here.
She can help with PDP.
Okay, that's good, those two.
All right, so we'll add her to the PDP?
Yep.
Do I have a motion as second to put me on the budget committee?
Motion.
Second.
I'll be the alternate.
As the alternate, yes.
Doug, Peg?
Yes.
Emily? I guess she's a, I guess she's a yes. She's happy.
She said yes.
How are you, how are you reading that?
Down at the bottom, there's a thing called chat. Hit chat and it's off to the right.
I don't have it on mine. I don't know. That's all right. Oh, I see it.
Okay, she's going to see if she can come back in.
Okay.
So we have Emily for the PDP.
What's PDP?
Professional Development?
Sorry, yeah.
You making that motion?
I'll make the motion that she is happy to go on that one.
I'll second.
Is she replacing someone on that one?
Nope.
Um, no, I'm on it, so she would be kind of the alternate. Emily, is that you?
Hi.
Yes.
You.
So we're all set. I'll say aye. Peg?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Now, what about Emily? She's, aye? I guess, okay.
Are you back?
She's eating, whatever she's doing. Okay, I guess that's it. Okay. Moving on to the minutes.
Wait, did you want to go back to the calendar? Did we already approve the calendar? We're all set, right?
That was already approved.
Okay, all right.
Anybody got it?
Good.
Let's, let's, somebody wants to make some changes?
Nope.
No, you've got it down here later, so. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the public minutes of Wednesday, May 13th. What am I hearing?
Run the second?
Second.
Missed with corrections that have been sent to Tammy already?
Okay, I vote aye. Peg?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Emily?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
How we can, yeah, yeah. Couldn't before, but that's good. We'll get it, we'll get it done right. Okay, four to zero. Ready? Okay, non-public?
I will make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from Wednesday, May 13th with a couple of minor corrections.
Second.
Anybody else? Aye. Peg?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Emily? I think we lost her again.
Oh, no, Emily.
Okay.
Do we not have Melissa either?
No.
Can somebody, can somebody text her?
Melissa or?
I don't have her text. I don't have her number.
Melissa?
Melissa.
Okay, yeah, I will.
Earl called her, I think.
No, I didn't. I didn't, Doug.
Oh, I thought you said you were. Okay, all right, that's all right. All right, moving on. Okay, moving on?
All right, wait a minute, hold on. Melissa is, one can hear me.
She's on mute.
Oh, yeah, she's on mute.
She just came back on.
Yeah, so she's on mute.
Hi, all right, never mind.
All right.
The exciting part's over now. We did the minutes. Okay, Earl, I think you're up.
Thank you. As you're aware, from the board update, the administration has worked on all of those areas and closed. Now, we're going to go around, just like we've done the past two months, and take a look at closing of school. Things went very well in terms of having planned ahead, and we put the three phases in, in terms of that. I'll have the administrative team speak about that. Worked very hard on the end-of-year things. John put out his end-of-year tape last night, this morning, and Jan has reworked the grad, the grad ideas that we had given you. She had spent a great deal of time, and then we had a Zoom call with some parents and so forth, and then put Plan Two, which she'll go into, and she's cleared it with the New York State Ed in our, in things like that, the insurance carrier, but she'll go through that. Timmy will talk about him and Rob Qua's work with the paras. Everyone has done a great job in terms of providing food, and unlike other, some other schools that are not providing food for students, we're planning on doing it through July and into Aug, and into August as well. This has been a lot of time. Nate has worked with it, and Tim and Rob Qua and myself, and we are able to do this and provide food for all of the students that do want that, and we've been able to do it beginning in mid-March. So it'll be mid-March, April, May, June, July, and August. So that has been a huge area that we've really tried to work very hard with students in the homes to provide that. And later on, we'll be looking at the employees. Tim has done a great job. He'll speak, he'll speak about that. That has been a lot of coordination in terms of staff and state ed, and CAP and STRAP, and fresh picks in order to make that, to make that occur. Now, starting July 5th, we're working on a hybrid as far as to assist students, as you know. Although, in many aspects, there's been a claim for what our school has done, what New Hampshire State has done, but we're very aware that remote learning isn't, isn't, doesn't work as well for students as if they were there. And Jen will speak about the tech, and if, whatever model, and I'm not going to go into that, we'll begin to talk about more next time we meet, and July when we meet as well, we'll talk about going back to school in the fall. But suffice to say, we want to connect so that our capacity for students, basically, whether we have to go back, and I'm not going to go into depth, but there's a likelihood, many schools, not only New Hampshire, but in other states, you all have read quite a bit, it's been voluminous, but they're talking about a hybrid approach when we do return to school. So one of the things that is incumbent on that, and that a lesson we've learned, is that there's going to need, be a need for device for every student. There's going to be a need for device for everyone in the school system that will be working with students. Because if you think of the picture of, let's say, one of the scenarios is that there is a hybrid when we go back, that would mean, perhaps, that half of the students would be attending one day, the other students would be attending the other day. So schools would have to have the capacity for students to have a Chromebook, whatever, while they are at school, and the students will need the capacity for it when they are home. So we've talked about it, we've begun to talk about it as administrative team. So for example, if half of the students are in school at the time with their dis, dis, the zing, and mask and so forth, the other students that are home would, would be able to view the instruction. So half of the students would be seeing the instruction, would be there at school, and the other, the other students would be seeing it from home. But getting back to the point, during July 5th, both Jen and John will speak about it. We are looking at hybrid approach where many of the students will be working remotely. Rob Qua will touch upon it as far as students with IEPs are concerned, but it also, Bob is involved in terms of ensuring that we cleanse all the areas. So basically, it would look, the picture would look a hybrid, meaning a portion of the students are learning remotely, and a portion of the students come in for either one-on-one or small group instruction. As of now, we're looking at the possibility of, if any, it's like three or four students, dis, distance in a room. The teacher or the para, that's why we're calling them a lead teacher, they would meet the student with the parent, would drop the student off. They would be distance in the parking lot or when they come in. They would escort the student down to the room, then they would walk the student back outside again. This is for July 5th. Hopefully, we won't be in this situation two months afterwards, as far as when we go back to school in the fall in some form. But so that you understand it in, in your mind, it would be a hybrid. It's so vital that we're, we're trying to really educate students, we're trying to feed students for 12 months. We're trying to educate students for 12 months. So with the gaps that occur in essence, every student has an IEP now, where we're looking at what they know and are able to do, and trying to bring them up to, up to that point. So at this point, I, I actually, I'm going to reverse it a little bit. Timmy just joined us. Tim, would you like to speak about the food as far as the students are concerned? Is Tim on?
Yes, I'm here now.
Okay. Tim has done a great deal of work. You can bring them through that a bit.
Yeah, basically, the, the food delivery is continuing. We've switched from having the food prepared at the high school to working with the Community Action Program, and they're out of the high school down to Spalden, down to Rochester. And basically, we're going down Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, picking the food up, bringing it back to the high school, dispersing it out to the buses, and then the buses go and deliver them to the students. And then likewise, the coolers come back and we take them back down to Rochester. The aides are still, the, the pair of professionals are still helping us as far as that goes. And so that delivery of the Monday, Wednesday, Friday is continuing through the Monday, the 28th. And then at that point, we'll either continue doing it exactly the same or changing it up a bit, depending on driver availability, para availability, and certainly Tri-County Community Action, their ability to get us the food uncertainties.
Thank you. Actually, you know, I like the sports analogies, and we have been very fortunate. It's great that the board is staying with the same groups, the same board chair and so forth. So too, the administration has stayed that way. There's no way that we would have been this effective in light of the adaptive bill for the, in having to change and to really transform the whole school system, had we not had a consistent board and team. This could never have been done, and everyone has really performed their roles right to a T. I'm going to have Bob speak a little bit, and Jan, about the guidelines when people enter the school, and Bob, you can talk about having to cleanse, having to do that. Bob, is Bob on?
Yes, yeah, I'm on.
You can bring them through some of the guidelines there.
Okay. Everyone upon entering the buildings currently ends up filling out a form and answering questions, whether or not they have any current symptoms or have a high fever, and that, that ends up being recorded. So we're keeping track of all of that. We know who is coming into the building. We know what their business is to be there, where they're going, and then we're able to actually sanitize the spaces that were used on a daily basis after everyone has, has left for the day.
Great, great, Bob. Thanks. Jen, would you like to speak about the tech a little bit? I talked about what we're trying to build to. Perhaps you can bring them through that in the tremendous amount of work you've done in that vein.
Sure. Sorry, my daughter just got home and is not crying in the background. You can come here. So we talked a little bit about potentially having the opportunity to go, sorry, go one-to-one. And if we were able, if we were able to do that, what it would mean, you need to stop, what it would mean for, okay, you go to bed. I'm really sorry.
Basically, she did a lot of work on figuring out how many devices we need and how much it's going to cost to be able to go one-to-one. Okay, go, Jen.
So I, after our admin meeting today and the opportunity for how much money do we have in the budget, how much do we have in grants, and how many devices we already have, we thought that the best thing moving forward would be to work with the Chromebooks because that is the best kind of way to make sure that we don't have, bring any type of malware or anything into the building and on our Wi-Fi, which would be about $305 per computer, which would total $125,000, minus roughly $40,000 in grant money that has already been approved into various grants. So no matter what, $40,000 worth of grant money has been approved, it would be about $86,000 left over that we would need to come up with. Because we'd be going one-to-one, we would not need to purchase any carts because the kids would be having the computers themselves, or we'd be saving money in that aspect. And we would make sure the contract says that they need to charge their computers at home because then the charge would last nine hours, and we would potentially need to purchase charging ports in the building for that kind of opportunity. But that's, you know, without complicating things, at the very least, moving forward, we could, if we could find $86,000, we could go one-to-one next year.
And Nate, thanks, Jen. Nate, can you speak to that, that we would have the funds to do that?
Yes, I did another analysis of where we're at as of this morning, and we're looking at roughly $259,000 that we could spend from the bottom line of the budget after all warrant articles are taken out.
And this would put the district in a position, if we were a hybrid in the fall, if we were to try to go back, and then some COVID would break out, and we would all wind up remote again. In, in the best of worlds, if things work out, there'd never be a snow day because I think Emily had pointed out the blizzard bags a while ago. This would certainly give us the, we could certainly do that with things go back.
I think Peg got, Earl, stop there. I think Peg's got some questions.
And I don't know where my little hand went down at the bottom, but Jen or Nate, I guess my question is, there supposedly is more money coming regarding anything related to COVID. Would any of that be able to be used for some of these Chromebooks?
So we have the CARES Act. The CARES Act is $130,000. That has to go out to, it could go towards some computer purchasing if that's what we choose to do, but it also needs to go towards cleaning of the building. Some of it's already been dedicated to the food transportation for the summer. And then it, although it is not in the essence of Title One, like you need to only spend it towards Title One things, it is considered a title grant, and so we do have to have that set aside for private schools as well, in case they want services. So there are dedications to the money based on what the, the plan is from the state as to what it needs to be spent on. But yes, technology could be a part of that. You know, the wonder then would be, would we use the CARES, since the district money is only, that amount is only available till the end of the month, would we then look forward for those like charging ports, cases that could be needed, other things? And I did want to add to that, that we already have Lenovo's in the building, so those would go towards paras so that paras could also have devices to support students, whether they're remote or in the building.
I have a couple of questions. You said the cost for a Chromebook is 305. Is that right?
Yes, roughly.
So would that mean we're going to have to purchase about 409 more Chromebooks?
Yeah, we have 90 Chromebooks currently, sorry, 85 Chromebooks currently with our 495 students.
So we need another 409?
Yep, for...
Well, divide that. I just want to make sure my figures are right, Chromebooks.
So 495?
Yeah, that'll give us about right, 495.
Yeah, we need 495 when we're done, so minus.
We got 90.
Four, yeah, 410 is what we would need, 410 computers.
305. Now, where exactly, Nate, is this, the 86,000 coming from? Exactly.
It can come from, as of right now, it can come from the operating budget. Obviously, that's a board decision. We do have other things we need to discuss about.
The balance that's left, you mean?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I just want to understand that. Anybody else have any questions on the board? Please put your hands up now. Okay, Peg, go ahead.
Little Peg, this one is kind of for Earl. Earl?
Yeah.
Okay, you had sent out another email with additional money beyond the original CARES money. Any update on that? I mean, that again was for stuff based on teaching during this shutdown?
All of what we've sent has been worked with, with Jen, Nate, and her. So I, I'm not sure, Jen, I don't...
All right, then Jen, Nate?
So there's one pocket.
There's a second thing.
There's one pocket of CARES money. Unfortunately, the funding was, you're getting, it originally started much higher, and then I think the preceding emails made it smaller. The only other CARES, so then it made it look like, oh, good, we got this amount, and this amount, and this amount, which unfortunately, it was the one small amount. There is also a CARES Act IDA portion that was like a whopping $5,000 that we did use for summer school costs. So that was, that's to pay for summer school's remote learning. But the original CARES Act amount, that, that was originally around 180, is now 130, unfortunately.
Okay, very good. Thank you, because I just thought, like you said, it was extra money, it was more money coming in.
Yeah.
Thank you, but no, thanks. Okay.
The 144, and then the private school, we had to give them 8,000, right? Jen?
Yeah, we don't know yet. There, it's, it's, they said to set aside anywhere between three, whatever our Title One or Title Two supports are typically. And then once they, I think their exact words, "Once we figure out how much we would like to do, we will then let you know if you can either set aside the larger amount or give some back to yourself." But I have a meeting with a private school tomorrow to determine exactly what supports they feel like they'll need, and they may not need all of that money depending on what, because we're just supporting our own students who go there, so it will really depend too on what they need. They may not even want that, that amount or that, those services.
I got a question. Shouldn't some of that CARES Act money definitely be spent on PPE equipment?
Yes.
Now, how would you determine what we're going to bring into the building? Are we going to bring in face shields or masks?
Bob?
Bob Adams.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can answer that.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can answer that. In order to use a face shield, you have to use a mask. So we're, we're going to be using masks predominantly. And in special situations, if we need a mask, we'll have, I mean, a face shield, we'll, we'll have that available.
Well, see, I, I heard something different today, and I don't mean to be, go against that. I heard that people are buying, using the face shields instead of the mask because the face shields can be cleaned and reused without a face mask. I read an article today, and I was talking about it to Earl today about it. And he said he'd read the same article. So I don't know, I think Melissa wants to talk after. So I don't know the answer, okay? Melissa?
Yes, and because if someone has to wear a face mask every single day, they're difficult to breathe in. And we usually have the option of the face shield or the mask. And with the shield allows us to breathe a little bit easier. We have never been told, I have never been told we had to wear both.
I don't know, I don't have the answer, people. I just read the information and that's all. I just don't know what to do.
So in answering you, Doug, we do have to account, and we've been talking about it in all of the administration meetings. And there's been a voluminous amount of people trying to sell various things to us. And Bob has been the clearinghouse for that. And then in the administration meetings, we discuss it. And I've given the direction to Bob to try to stockpile as many masks as we can. John, you were able to secure some, right? John? John?
It was from the, the same, for the New Hampshire Emergency Center. New Hampshire FEMA.
Yeah.
I got some of the, they had called us like in April sometime and said that if we needed them, and at that time, we didn't need them because we were remote. And then I got some, I think I got about 500 or 100, something like that.
Right.
I think Paul won't speak.
So, yeah, just going back to the computers again, we, that we need all those additional laptops to support remote learning, is that what it is?
So that would make us one-to-one. So the concern I brought up was if we are saying, so I'm sending out a technology survey. And when I sent out that survey, if we have 100 students, say even half, 200 students who don't have computers at home. So now we have 200 computers. And if we alternate days and we send all of those computers home, there are no computers left in the building for students to use. And so now, what do we, so then, I'm not saying can't have to be on the computer all day at school either, but then how are we supporting their next day? So if they're alternating days, how are we helping them to figure out what they're doing at home if they have no computer at school to model for them? So that's when it came up to the, what do we need for that type of thing? I do want to point out too that if, when I talked to Steve this afternoon, we, right now, our quotes are for $305 per computer. It could be, if we say, yes, we're going to move forward, he can negotiate that lower. That's what it was for 30 computers. I looked it up for, we got quotes for one cart worth at a time. But if, once you buy in bulk, you can spend more time negotiating. So the price could go down too, which is just better for us. But I, we can't guarantee anything lower than that yet. That's just the hope.
Okay, thanks.
I have one question. Say we go along with this 125,000, 125,000 you need. Do we have any guarantee how long it'll take to get this 409 Chromebooks? How long will it be?
Well, we'd have to order them by the end of the month. So I would say we'd have them by, by, by the end of the summer. I mean, we'd have them this summer.
Well, isn't everybody in the same situation as us?
Steve might be able to answer that more. And I know he's, he said he'd be willing to. But I, I feel like every time I put in a quote with Maureen, she's been pretty quick with me to, to do a quick turnaround.
Yeah, it, it's going to depend on stock. And I won't know until we're ready. We have a full amount and we're ready to order. But right now, there is still some stock, although it is changing daily. So it's not guaranteed.
So we'd have to take this money out of our end-of-year operating budget? Nate?
Nate?
Yes.
Okay, what does the board want to do?
I wanted to hear.
Oh, wait a minute. Melissa, you spoke first, I'm sorry.
I want to hear, Nate had briefly said something about he had some concerns about that. I wanted to hear what he had to say before we went and vote on anything.
What was your question exactly, Melissa, I'm sorry?
Nate made a statement earlier about not taking money out of the end-of-the-year budget, and I wanted to know why.
Nate?
Oh, yeah, it's not so much your concern, it's just what you guys want to do because we do have some other things to discuss. And I can't stress enough that these numbers will change weekly. But if you were to ask me right now, I would say, yes, we have enough to do it.
Peg, I think you had your hand up. Peg, you muted.
Sorry, I just didn't want the dog. Melissa kind of brought it up because we do have other things. Is there any way, Doug, that we can kind of put this, group this with everything else so that we can look at everything else that we are looking at spending that money on? And then come back and make the decision? Do we have to make that particular decision right now?
You're the board members, what do you want to do?
I would like to wait and see what the situation is on everything and see what we do have left for money and what we can spend. Not that I don't want to buy the computers, Jen, but.
Oh, I'm in the same boat. I said, I said I love to go one-to-one. I just, I want to be confident that we're not also, you know.
Paul, you have a problem with that? You want to go that too, Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to wait, please.
Melissa?
I agree.
Emily?
Yeah, we'll wait.
Okay, all right.
All right.
So when's the next meeting then? If you go.
No, till the end of today, Tammy.
All right, all right.
Hey, Earl, you're still up?
Yeah, okay, we're going to go now with John and then Jen, and they're going to talk about the end-of-year things that they have and then go into what July and August is going to look like. So I'm going to turn it over to you, John, and you could talk about the celebration.
Okay, um, well, I'll start with, like, the end of the year. We were, as I said, we were phasing out. One of the things that we did is we decided that there were some students who didn't get, just because of scheduling and so forth, couldn't do all of the Unified Arts or may have had a few more assignments to catch up with. So any student, and we gave the criteria, who had a failing grade in the Unified Arts, and if they wanted to make up the assignments, we were giving them till the end of the month. So they will receive a report card this week. If there's an F on it, then they can, they can make up the work. Teachers will be checking once a week to see what work is done. And they have the opportunity to change the grades. But if they choose not to, that's fine as well. And again, the criteria, where we talked about summer school, so that kind of, they can make choices based on the criteria. Then I also listed here, we had some staff members leaving, which we celebrated at the end-of-the-year celebration, which we recorded. I sent you guys out the links. It took a while to get that uploaded to the drive. And there are also some short videos in there. There was the video tribute to Susan Everett that we did. And also just kind of a recap of the school year. So those are, been emailed to you, so you have those. And one of the things is, I did include the staffing for next year that we have, we made some movement. We have, Amy Brown is going down to second grade. We'll have three second-grade teachers and one fourth-grade teacher because our third-grade class right now is 22 or 23. So we have like 11 kids in a classroom. So that's good for third grade. But for fourth grade, we thought it was a little small. So the plan was to, we have fourth-grade class of 22. And then we will have the three fourths grades presently going into three second grades. And because of this small bubble going through, we'll be able to keep that for two years. So we're going to have some small classes from first to second grade. And then after this class graduates, because what will happen is next year, there'll only be one fifth-grade teacher. And that, one of the other fifth-grade teachers will move. After that year, then we'll have to make a decision whether we want to keep the three second grades and hire an additional teacher or move the model around and go back to the two. But we have that luxury now to do that. Stephanie Illinois is our new kindergarten teacher. She went from kindergarten to first grade. We're excited about that. And we have our preschool teacher. Jess Hopkins is moving into first grade. And Amy Brown's there. There is a mistake down in Unified Arts. Library is still Emma Baker. It's art that's to be determined, which we have the nomination for tonight. But as far as the end of the year, the teachers have been wrapping up. We've had, like I said, the celebrations went really well. I'm going to be sharing. We also did a kindergarten graduation and got to share that with, that's on the drive. And I'll get to share that with people too. So that was very good.
Thank you, John. Jen?
I don't know if you're able to see the video links on the town Facebook for our Core Three awards, since we couldn't hold those. Those were very well received. So people are asking, moving forward, even if we have award ceremonies in the fall, could we put a presentation like that together for parents who aren't able to come and just share with the community? So we may do that. It's a lot of work, but people really loved it. So I think we'll do that. Monday, I think Doug saw a whole bunch of cars coming through. We had our drop-off and pickup. So kids dropped off any textbooks, library books, novels, their Chromebooks, their hotspots, that kind of thing, and picked up awards or picked up their cap and gowns for the seniors. So that went really well, very smooth. I had a ton of volunteers. They were awesome helping with that. We couldn't have done it without them. We couldn't have done it without Jen's organization. So it went really well. And now we're following up and calling parents, reaching out for the ones who didn't and dropped the materials off so we can get everything back hopefully and wrapped up by the, by tomorrow would be great, but probably by the end of next week. Graduation, I sent you guys the, kind of the steps for it. But they'll have an assigned parking spot. They'll get a placard, different colors for each row with an arrival time. So we'll fill it from the front to the back so that they're not having to swerve around each other. The police department will be taking care of all the parking. We won't do anything with that. They'll be fully in control of that. Students will stay in their cars for the entire ceremony, except the diploma piece, at which point they'll get out, they'll walk in a clockwise manner. So always coming to the pavilion from the left, crossing the stage when their name is called. They'll pick up their diploma and any scholarships or awards they received off the table. Then they'll get a picture taken. They'll have their masks on until the picture. I'd love to get a picture of each of them with a mask on and their masks off. Gesska will have a photographer available for us that day and then head back into their car. I have a couple of parents who are working on organizing a parade afterwards through town. So as the police department empties the parking lot, then they would begin their parade at that time. So are there any questions on that? We did release who our top five graduates were in our valedictorian and soliditorian.
Just tell everybody the date, the rain date for the graduation.
It's Saturday, June 27th at 1:00 PM. And the rain date is the next day, Sunday, June 28th, also at 1:00 PM, at the Milton Town Beach.
What do you have any questions for Jen or John?
And then summer school, we are doing slightly different. Typically, kids had to have a 60% average at the end of the year to qualify for summer school or credit recapture. Because of the way the year ended, anyone who had 60% or were eligible for summer school at the end of the first semester, even if they got a failing grade, they will get an incomplete. And they'll be able to continue to work on it until August 6th, at which time everything will be graded. If they failed the class or failed the grade level, they may redo the class or redo the grade level. But we're just giving them some extra time. There will be staff support for that. Some in small groups may be in the building. Some may be working at home independently. Some may be working at home with scheduled check-in times with teachers or paraprofessionals. But just giving them a little extra opportunity to complete their work for the year.
Earl, you still with us?
Yeah.
Who do you want to talk next? But your picture's gone.
Can, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, we're done.
Can I bring one other thing up? I'm sorry. So the masks that they're going to wear, Jen has one. So we had those made from Colin Sports. So this is the mask that the seniors have that they will be wearing.
Nice.
It's only going to the seniors, that's all?
Well, we actually got enough that the staff will get one. And we think we will have enough for every student in the fall to get one.
I like those, Jen, thank you.
Yep, that was Donna Marie. She's the one who, who got those made.
Okay. Who do you want to talk next, Earl?
We're all set, thank you very much.
John?
Want to talk, have quiet talk?
What's that, John?
Rob, quiet.
Oh, Rob, I'm sorry. It's Rob.
Sorry if you wanted to get out of it, Rob.
I'm sorry, Rob.
Almost made it.
No, you didn't. I had to.
All right, all right, what do you guys want to know? First of all, the Paris, again, spectacular. We are so lucky. They're underpaid, they're underappreciated. And everything they do has been just stepping up to the plate in a very challenging time and making things happen. We should be fully stocked for people to support remote learning, to support small cadres of students coming into the building, to support the food program throughout the summer. We, we've got, we've got Paris ready to go for all those things. All those should become, all those intense hires should become before you later. As far as, and I know you guys have probably seen a lot of crazy stuff, the governor's order that required ESY meetings and then meetings, you know, within the first 30 days. They're already walking back that latter part about the first 30 days. So we should be not only spending time in meetings at the beginning of next year, but the ESY thing, we've got figured out, which is good. We address it specifically at every IEP meeting, just as a district. And that has helped us a lot. So now we can kind of go get back together as a team and look at who do we have that isn't part of ESY right now that we might want to bring in. And so we've had those conversations as a department. And we have reached out to a few parents. But overall, we're covered, you know, under the governor's order as it's been interpreted, which is really good. As far as ESY itself, what I decided to do because of staffing realities and, you know, safety concerns is say that ESY is going to be delivered entirely remotely. However, we would like to support the summer school program. So if there are students, you know, obviously, there are going to be a lot of students with and without disabilities that are going to need support in making up ground from what they might have lost because remote learning didn't work for them. So if a student needs to come in for summer school to make up ground in order to pass for the year, for instance, we would be part of supporting them in that. And so what I, what I, what I hope is we're characterizing that as not only delivering ESY services, E S Y services, but also providing extra support where it's needed.
Is that it?
Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you.
You all done, Earl?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
My question, is our individual from Airman here yet?
Yes.
Do we want to move him up?
Yes.
Thanks, Nate. Okay. Okay, we need to talk about the fire alarm and the air handler. Okay? And what you need. Okay? And what it is, we have presently in that fund, do the air handler and on the alarm, we don't have enough money. We're short about $16,000, Nate? We do it all?
Yes.
Okay. Now, it's up to the board what they want to do. We do have $90,000 left in the renovation fund. People, we have some couple other issues that are coming up that's going to cost us money that we need to make a decision on. So we've signed a contract, the fire alarm, to proceed for both M E S and the high school. That's the cheaper one, because we thought it was going to be the most expensive. What happened is the air handler turned out to be the most expensive. Did you want to say something, Mr. Rob?
I do. I feel like it's important to mention, given the current topic of conversation. I'm going to be in a meeting on Friday regarding a student who may require a massive output of money for a residential placement. I've been trying to find agencies to cooperate with us this entire school year. I've been unsuccessful so far and the student now has a public guardian. So we may be in a position where we have to kind of go a very expensive route for the student.
Rob, could I, we, let's just suffice to say we might have a high court placement.
Right. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Let's, okay, let, you know, I don't want to go with any.
No, we're not going into detail, but I just wanted to throw that out there because I feel like it is pertinent to the current discussion.
Yeah, good, good.
But I think we're somewhat covered because we do have money, I think, how much in that trust fund, the special ed?
It's about $215,000.
So we don't have.
$14,000.
So we could always go to that fund if we want to do a, that's up to the board, though. It's not up to me. Can't remember what page it's on, though. You've got money in your, that's what that fund is for.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Paul?
Paul, go ahead.
So we've been handling, we've been doing this air handler and all this stuff for quite a while now.
I know, go ahead.
So that's what I think we should do first, before we buy more Chromebooks and do all this other stuff. We need to finish the jobs that we needed to start to begin with. If we have to have extra money coming anywhere, I just want to make sure this job gets done because the public is concerned about the air handler, about the fire alarm system. That needs to be our priority one before we start spending money on other things. With the spec ed, there could be something, big money also coming in. We've got to make sure we have our priorities in a row before, you know, and as we go through the meeting tonight and make sure we have everything covered.
Well, we do. Only $16,000 shot for the whole project. But the thing is, what we could do, and this is, we could do, only do the first floor on the air handler at M E S, because that's the one that we're having the biggest problem with. The one on the second floor, we're not having any problem with at this point. The one on the first floor is, Bob speaking from wrong, is 32 years old and we're having a problem. And the one on the second floor is 22 years old and we're not having a problem. So if we do the first floor, we will be okay. And anybody on the fire alarm, Peg?
Not on the fire alarm. Back to the air handler, since you just brought it up. I mean, do we want to stay with the fire alarm and then ask my question when we get to the air handler?
Well, they're all, they're all intertwined in that money.
Okay, then my question would be, you said not do the second floor. I'm just wondering about quality of air on the second floor, which would be probably, Bob, an answer from you. If we didn't do the second floor, how is that going to impact the air, quality of the air, and will it cause a lot more to do it down the road? Bob?
Okay, with the, with the second floor air handler currently operates, it is maintained. We change the filters out, so it gets preventative maintenance as well. We certainly could look at postponing that if the board chose to do that to a future date. However, we did invite David Story, and if you want him to talk about that too. Delaying that part of the project certainly does increase the cost down the road too. So if you want to do that, Mr. Schut?
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, David, if you could help us with that?
Yeah, obviously it always costs you more to remobilize a contractor. So, you know, you might save $100,000 now on the project, it might cost you $150 or $175 to do it. 25 years old, you know, that, that would be considered pretty close to the end of life. You know, you might get a couple of years out of it, but, you know, 30, 30 years, you're beyond what it should last. As far as ventilation, the new system is definitely making it better than what's there on the second floor, just for your overall quality of ventilation. You know, right now, the, the system isn't fully ducted and this, this project is going to duct all the rooms together. So you're, you're really going to make sure that you're doing proper ventilation to all the spaces. Another thing, you know, it's going to save energy in the long run, you know, that air handler right now doesn't have energy recovery and the unit, the new unit will.
You talking about the first floor or the second floor?
For energy recovery.
For both, you talking about both floors or just one floor?
The new, the, the new unit will serve both floors. One unit in the basement.
Everybody got that?
I have a question.
Paul, go ahead.
So when we initially went through this and had the public come speak about it and all that, what was that project? Was it just this one or was it both units?
It was both units. We're replacing the two old ones with the energy recovery unit that we're installing in the basement.
So when we had that public hearing, the public was pretty strong in their opinions that we should do that job and clean up the air in the school. I don't think we should balk at it now and go halfway. We should continue to do that job and if we got to find a way to do it, because that's what the public wants for their students in the school, we need to find a way to do it.
Peg? I totally agree and I am going to ask the monetary question. Right now, doing the fire alarm and the air handler both floors, are we really only $16,000 in the hole? Because we also have that other, from the, or regarding the fire alarm, that we need more for that, for the cost that we crossed out and then for the warranties.
We don't know if we're going to do the warranties yet. We got to make that decision.
Okay, well, I, I'm trying to just get a total, what are we looking for for money? If the distance, our difference between what we had from the two increased adequacy aids for the fire alarm, both fire alarms and the air handler, both floors, is $16,000. I mean, my feeling is, like Paul, do it. Do both of them. Do both floors, do both fire alarms. You know, we're going to have to do it eventually. And if we're just $16,000 off now, it's going to be a lot better than $150,000 we're going to be scrambling for when the second floor breaks in two years.
Like I said before, this is what the public wanted the last time we had this hearing. And we're not going to renege on that. We're trying to build a trust right now. We need to stick with and remember why we did that.
Yeah. Melissa has a question.
No, I, I agree with Paul. People made it clear they wanted the air handler done. It took us forever to get to this point and I'm honestly tired of having to spend a year negotiating over to get something done. We need this done. The second one's going to go pretty soon. Let's get it done now.
Peg?
Yeah, that's primarily why I was just looking at the money, so that we can give Nathan an idea of all the money we're talking about. The money man? Money bags? So do we have $16,000 is what we are looking for to do both fire alarms, both schools, and the air handler, both, almost 17,000, air handler, both floors?
That's it, right? Nate?
Nate?
Yeah, in my opinion, we, we have the money to do it all.
Then can I make a motion that we continue on, please?
You need to tell them where the money is first, Nate, before you say that.
The 16,000 at this point in time can come from either the operating budget leftover that we haven't spent because of COVID, or it could even come from the 90,000 out of the trust fund.
Understand that, everybody? We do have it.
Yep.
Okay. Peg?
I'll make a motion that we take this, 17,000, 16, whatever it is, out of the operating budget to do the fire alarms and the air handler.
I would not do that now. You've got a problem down the road. You got a, you got a grease trap you got to talk about, okay? That you got to take care of, all right? That's unexpected. We have a problem, we think is going to be minor. You have an air duct cleaning that we, that we, we can postpone till next year because it's a next year's budget. The money you can take, the 90, the $16,000, you can take out of the renovation fund.
Or we could take the others out of the renovation fund too, right?
You could.
Nate?
My recommendation is to take the 16 out of the trust fund. Because we know that's $90,000. That's not going to change.
I agree.
We know we got it.
Yep.
I retract my, my motion then.
You want to say up to 17,000 out of the trust fund, Peg?
I will make a motion that we take up to 17,000 out of the building trust fund to complete the fire alarm and the air handler both levels of M E S.
I will second that. Do I have any more discussion? I'll say aye. Peg?
Aye.
I'm going to, Paul?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Melissa?
Does that include the warranties?
No. Right now, we have a year.
We have two years, according to Bob.
Two years, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right.
Aye.
Okay. So we got the okay to move forward with all the projects? Bob and Dave, David? Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Good luck, David.
When can you start?
I don't have to do anything. I'm done. It's a contractor.
Oh, you're, oh, I see what's going on.
Yeah, I, I'm just the engineer.
How long do you think it'll take?
Oh, they'll be pushing it to, to start based on lead times, but they'll get it done as soon as we make a decision to let them go, so. You did it.
Everybody okay with that issue?
Go. Go.
What's that?
Go.
Go.
Start. I thought I did.
Thank you.
I thought I did.
What's that?
Jan.
Hey, do we want to go back or do we want to keep Bob moving here? You want to do 4D on paving?
Yeah, let's do it.
Well, wait, whoa. Do you want to stay with the fire alarm?
Dave, what you want?
I, I can sign off.
Oh, yes, you're all set.
Okay. I'm good.
Bye, David. Thank you.
Bye.
Bob, you're up. Go to page, everybody. What is it, 72?
Pick it up. Yeah, there we go. 72. Say summer. You ready?
Wait a minute, I got to get my page on.
Okay.
Okay, before I get started, I did a little homework. Oh, no, it's a long one. Went on the line and each one of these people, groups, have an A plus from the Better Business Bureau. And they have a B B B approval, so.
Doug?
Go ahead, Bob.
How about Peg?
Okay, I'm busy, I'm looking for my notes.
Sorry, Bob. I also did my homework and I agree with what Doug just said, and then I added up each one, I mean, if you look at individual projects, they're kind of all over the place, but I added up one, or all three companies doing all three projects and then all the three companies doing the first two projects that I think we've all agreed are by far the most important. The kindergarten and then the newt driveway. So very interestingly, Darrell is cheaper for all three and Sunday is cheaper for the first two. So I don't know if anybody has anything to say about any of them, but.
Now, Nate thinks we could take this out of the operating budget. Is that not correct, Nate?
Correct.
Everybody hear that? Okay, well, just, this is because the low bid is the low bid, doesn't miss it necessary. Because I found I did the same thing that Peg did. I found Darrell total amount was 52, 52,500. S and S was 54,400 and the highest one was Sunday paving, which was 55,976.
Doug, we agree.
So they all got a good B B and all got an A plus, so what the board wants to do.
So can we recontact them to say if we give them all three jobs, we can get a little more off?
I'm not the one to ask that question. Bob?
What I, what I recommend is that you set a budget and let Nathan and I work on those kinds of details, because I'm sure that if all three were awarded, we could knock it down and we might be able to negotiate along the warranty too.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we spend up to $56,000 out of the end year's operating budget.
I'll second.
Let Doug and Paul.
Could you reiterate what it was for again? I'm so sorry. Is that for the paving?
Paving for all three projects.
Okay.
Up to $56,000. I'll second it in. Okay, do I have any more discussion? And we're going to take it out of the operating budget.
Could, could I raise a point?
Raise a point.
I thought Peg had said we were going to look at everything that could come out of the budget and then prioritize. I think that as we go here, we, whatever the board wants to do, I support wholeheartedly. But I need to point out that if we're going to instruct students in the fall, under a hybrid scenario or more of a remote scenario, scenario, we have to have the capacity to get that done. Okay, okay, I'm just pointing it out.
Hold off, I'll, I'll withdraw until we get to the end then.
No, no, but it's fine. It's apparent that that's the direction of the board and I fully respect that. But there, I think, we could be, there, there could be a difficulty in carrying out education for students. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so we're looking at $56,000.
Okay, let's wait till the end.
And then.
Because we got, let's wait till the end, because you got the one, the 125 and the 56. That's my thought. Why don't we wait until the end and see exactly what we can do?
86 and.
Yeah, yeah.
We're taking the, I'm sorry, can we just back up for two and a half, two and a half seconds? The 16K for the air handler and fire alarm is coming out of the.
Trust fund.
Trust fund. Okay, thank you.
So I'll, I'll, I'll hold off until this is over. Right now, we have left, and the operating budget is 358,165,91. Is that right, Nate?
The expenses, yes.
Operating budget, okay. So then we got some other things to discuss, so I'm going to hold off on that till we're all done and everything. I agree, Earl. Okay. Bob, you want to talk about? Let's go to the grease trap.
Okay. The grease trap is all rusted out in the new kit, in the newt kitchen. So that was installed prior to when we opened in 2006. I received two bids on that. I tried to get three, but I did get two bids out of that. So they, on one of, on one of the bids, if you look at page 74, it gives an option of possibly using a poly tank instead of a steel tank as we currently have. it gives an option of possibly using a poly tank instead of a steel tank as we currently have. Um, and it would need some more investigation though, in order to see if technically that could actually work. But it turns out that, um, you know, I think the least cost out of the two certainly ends up being with Pioneer. They're out of, um, they're out of San Bonneville, so they're right, they're a local company. Uh, they haven't worked for us in Milton, but, uh, they've done, um, boiler work and repair and maintenance at the Paul School and I've hit, worked with them. I've worked with that company in the past there.
So what's the total bid, quote on that bid, Bob?
It's, um, ten thousand nine hundred dollars.
Now, what's on the front page on seventy-three? What is that?
Seventy-three is the second vendor. They quoted, so, you know, that was a little bit higher for sure.
So if we go with the poly, then it drops down to eight thousand one hundred.
Right, so there, if you set a budget, uh, limit on that, I could do some more investigative work, uh, with Pioneer Mechanical um, in order to see whether or not the poly could work and then we could, um, do it at a lesser cost. But at least we know worst case, use the, the steel tank.
So where does the board want to take that money out of? The trust fund or the operating budget?
Nate? I don't know, operating budget, I mean, we still have things to add up.
Yeah.
I'm trying to keep it down.
My suggestion is to let's go through all of them and then we can prioritize.
Yep.
So there's no grant for something like that? I'm just curious.
Oh.
I'm just curious. I wrote it down on my paper, so. I don't know.
No grants?
No. I was just curious.
Okay, so what, what do you think you really want to use then on that? Up to a certain amount? Set it aside?
Up to ten thousand nine hundred.
Okay, all right, that's the, uh, okay, that's that, okay. F with the air duct cleaning. Now, we can postpone that, Bob, until next year because that's already in the operating budget.
Correct.
Is that right, Bob?
That's, that is correct. Yeah, if we were looking at, um, offsetting, um, monies from last year and wanted to spend it out of this year's budget, it does give you an opportunity to create some room in the bottom line budget for next year if you wanted to do some of this work.
Nate?
Uh, we could also, we're having a meeting on the twenty-third or something, right?
Well, we'll discuss that. We'll get back there, yeah.
Okay, so if we do, we could also revisit one or two of these. Just throwing that out there. I'll have a better understanding of, a more concrete number where we are too.
Mean at the end of the year, you don't think your pink is, uh?
As long as it's encumbered before the end of the month, we're fine.
What's the board want to do?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Paul.
So while they're doing all the air handler work and all this other stuff, they're not doing, cleaning the ducts at the same time as part of that deal? They're going to be disturbing the duck work, putting in the air and all that. You would think they would clean it.
Bob?
Yeah, the rest of this is, um, Mr. Schud and I had talked about this. Since we're going forward with the heat, air handler, we would follow doing the duct cleaning. That's not part of that project. It's not part of the scope of work. So we would follow, we would do the air handler, um, it's the supply ducts on the first and the second floor next year out of next year's budget. But we could look at the opportunity of spending money for Newt's work out of this year's budget.
Okay.
Good, Paul. Thank you.
So we could, we could do what Nate suggests because we got to make a decision. If we want to meet on June twenty-third, we can't meet on the Wednesday because we can't get that room. So we could hold these, the grease trap, uh, the paving until that date and make the final decision on that date if you'd like to.
We originally were not going to have a meeting, correct?
No, but we, because we got so much coming up at the end of the year. I, I don't know, whatever you want to do.
I just don't know if I'm going to be in attendance for that.
Okay.
I just don't understand if we didn't expend a lot of money because of this COVID, why we can't get these projects done that are going to improve the air quality in both buildings, which is going to be very important given the nature of current condition.
Well, we'll be on that point now. We've taken care of that issue. We're talking about these other ones, the paving and the grease trap.
No, we're also talking about cleaning the, um, what do you call it, the duct work.
We want it at the same time?
Well, if, I'm looking, first of all, if they're doing all this work over at MES, there's going to be a lot of dust brought up, a lot of particles. It makes sense that those should be cleaned right away. I'm surprised that they're not doing that as part of the package.
That's what I was saying.
I agree.
Thank you. Yeah, me too.
So what are, what is our, what is our end quotes, Bob, for doing the cleaning?
Uh, for, for what? Okay, there's, uh, let me grab the pages, sorry. Okay, seventy-nine. Yeah, one of them is a total. Help me out, thanks.
I had a total of both of them for eighty-four, sixty-one.
Sixty-three cents.
And the elementary would be slightly less pegged only because, um, that would be work that they were doing with the old air handlers in place. So there's less, a little less work because they have two, two less pieces of equipment to do, but that would be the high end. Okay?
Okay, good, good. So I agree with Melissa. I mean, I think we need to do MES because they are going to be making a mess over there.
So what was this total bid? What was your total bid, Bob?
Uh, it was sixty-four and change for the high school. And it was two thousand fifty, well, two thousand anyway for the elementary.
So it was eight, four, six, one, sixty-three cents. Okay, all right. Now.
So, so not to add to the confusion, but understand, I can, I can do out of next year's budget the main air handler that supports ten of the rooms out of the middle school addition. Or I can do it this year. That was the point I wanted to make. But we could get all of Newt's work done and, and then that postpones work going into the future. It saves money in several operating budgets going forward if we knocked it all off this year.
And if I can just add, Bob, that if we have the money this year, I would rather see us spend it this year, get the stuff done that we've already identified needed to be done because who knows what's going to happen next year? You know, some, some other thing may just pop up that, yeah, we put in, say, fifty thousand dollars into the operating budget for one of these things that we've taken care of this year, but that'll cover whatever this emergency is next year. I'm all for doing whatever we can this year with whatever money we have and hoping for the best for next year.
So long as it doesn't leave us with no money. Yeah, so long as it doesn't leave us with any money for computers, I don't see why we wouldn't do as much as we can.
Oh, I agree, Emily. We know the eighty-six thousand is part of this whole total bottom line package. All right, I'll just write out a check. No problem, okay, Emily?
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
Why not? See what happens.
Uh, I, in the other thing Doug pointed out, and Bob can speak to it, we also have to take into account the PPE equip, equipment to get schools started for next year. So we are coming off a health and safety issue and this isn't like business where we're just going back to school. And our first mission, our, our two missions are the health and safety of the kids and to educate the kids. So Bob comes a little bit to what Doug pointed out, and we were going to talk about it more, what it's inevitably going to cost us in order to ensure the students and staff are safe when we parent in terms of, you know, masks or whatever else we have to provide.
I agree about PPE. But if we are having people back in the building even with masks, if our air is not clean, any issues, any problems will exacerbate.
Absolutely.
So I, I would like to have the kids come back into, and staff, I'm sorry, sorry, teachers and staff, into a clean building, both levels, and cover their faces and.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying an either or. I'm looking at as a positive, as a total amount of what we need to do to ensure we're going to be in good shape. I'm not, uh, I'm not prioritizing. I'm just indicating all of what we have to take a look at and Doug had pointed it out. So I don't want to discount that and not make sure. It's our jobs when we lead to make you as a board aware of what we're going to need to, to educate these kids and make them safe. I would not be doing our jobs if we didn't let you know it. And I'm not saying not to do one thing in favor of the next. I'm just letting you know what we need to do in order to get school going in the fall and the various scenarios that we have. So we don't really know, Bob, do we really know what the total cost of that is going to be?
No, we don't at this point in time because we don't know what plan we'll be under without state guidance. I do want to say though that, um, since the state will let us order PPE for summer activities, I did put in an order to start summer school. And once Jan and John get the numbers together for summer school, so we understand the activity which includes what Tim will need for his bus drivers, I can, I can replenish existing stock throughout the summer. Somewhere, somewhere out in, I believe by August, the state's expected to uh, open up the ordering capability for PPE for schools to start the fall semester because by then we'll have some definition as to what direction we're heading.
I think that.
My goal is to try and protect the base stock that we have now.
I think as we talked about at the administrative meeting, the commissioner and the other school superintendents have made it quite clear that the, that the orders are already backlogged. And we need to, um, firm it up and assuredly when we meet next time, you know, on June twenty-third, whatever, and is, is, is we go because we're going to need, assuredly need a stockpile. So again, it isn't an either or. All of this is important. I'm not saying one is more important than the other. Emily?
Can I just, I think, it's the goal to get through all of the things and all of the years so that we can have that conversation? Don't we have a few more things to put on the list here of costs? I see phone systems, scoreboard, walk-in refrigerator. Is that all financial stuff we need to talk about too?
Yes.
But one of the concerns I have is every time we identify something and say we want to get to it.
So we have to.
Go ahead, Melissa.
There's somebody's talking.
Nobody's talking.
My concern is, my concern is every time we identify, something else comes up to knock it down. And these are concerns that I don't want to see them end up costing us a lot more later on because we push them out and push them out.
One of the things, when you mentioned, um, PPE and stuff.
I agree. But my concern is, aren't we supposed to be making?
Emily, you are so cutting up.
I can't hear you.
Can, can you text it or chat it? It looks like she's gone again. Um, anyway, the PPE and I know Tim is still here. I don't know if he still is really here. Hi, Tim. But what I'm thinking is the parents and the bus drivers, when they're delivering food and, uh, Rob, this is for you too. There are so many people in town making masks, you know, like cloth masks. I'm just wondering if we reached out and at least got some cloth masks for the parents and, and bus drivers? What do you think? And what are they using now?
I don't know if that's good about a long-term basis though. I mean, as far as them using them all day versus using the other masks.
We have regular masks that they've been using, the ones we got from the emergency center.
Regular masks, right?
They have masks.
Yeah, not ones, not ones that are made.
Didn't Jennifer Levitt say a bunch are getting made by Collins?
Those are just, uh, those are the newt ones. We already have them.
Those are, those are different than the ones that people are making. Once the people are making, some of the cloth is not as thick as that.
We have also put like coffee filters and vacuum cleaner bag setups inside it.
Nate?
Keep in mind, we also have the CARES Act still. We've got money set aside for the, all these PPE.
We do? Where?
We have a, we have a.
That's what the intention is for the CARES Act. How do we support learning? And how do we make sure that there, that we have the supplies we need to get our students reading?
Emily sent a text.
Okay. I feel like our conversation is very scattered. Can we focus on the things?
I'm very confused.
And how much money is available?
Are you talking about the CARES Act or the operating budget?
For the PPE, we have, we have monies, we have budgeted for, for the PPE, um, supplies in the CARES Act.
How much? Peg must, Peg must know how much.
I believe it was four thousand, Jen?
Hold on, I'll tell you. I have a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I looked at. It's four thousand.
You looked at? Then why are you asking me?
Because I thought you knew on top of your head.
But then you're talking about taking money out of the CARES Act for computers, aren't you also?
Well, so that's why we're saying, right, we don't know if there'll be, there will definitely not be enough to, to go one-to-one in the CARES Act, which is why we brought it to you.
The operating budget.
There will not be, right, for the operating budget, there will not be enough in the CARES Act.
Now, can we, can we go back?
We did four thousand for PPE for, out of the CARES Act, but another four thousand for cleaning. So that's, I think, good to know too, so that if that way Bob needs certain cleaning supplies or products, we did budget that money in there too.
Hey, do we want to finish four?
Yes.
Let's go to four G, four G. Bob, we want to talk about that and then we'll move on. It's Bob.
Uh, this month, Nathan and I were a tag team. We're converting the SAU phone system, which is a cloud-based phone system to be tied into our physical campus system. And, um, looking at that, Nathan, is it still true we expect to save a hundred a month next year with this conversion?
Correct. I, there, there's no money upfront. They just pull some switches. Um, and then we'll be saving about a hundred dollars a month by doing. $100 a month by doing this.
It takes care of that one?
Yep.
Moving down to H.
Um...
What, what page?
Can we go back to money items, only because we have the fire alarm, page 61, that the extra money, we had approved the additional money at our emergency meeting, and the $4,004 newt and $3,500 for MES was taken off the bottom line. And this is now saying it has to be added in. So this is more money that I think needs to go in our list of what we're going to do and what we're going to spend our money on. Is that correct, Bob?
Nathan can come in too, but on page 65, he has the fire alarm cost in there at $86,52.05.
Hold on. I've got all these pages, I'm trying to go back and forth and...
Sure.
Okay, that was 64, 74, 72, oh my gosh. 75, all right.
65.
Sorry if I'm making a face at you, Bob.
This is how, this is how it's broken down for the 17,000.
What?
This is how I broke it down, that we only need about 17,000 to cover the cost. So that page 61 is included in that fire alarm cost of $86,000 on page 65.
Are you all set, Peg?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to know because that came up and, all right, I'm done, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Paul, where are you?
Oh yeah, my internet's all messed up, so.
Go ahead.
We've gone from paving, we've gone to the fire alarm, we've gone to the air handler, we've gone to the grease trap, now we're talking about masks, back to computers, back to the fire alarm. We are all over the place, and Emily's already sent a couple of texts saying, we need to get, we need to get this a little more organized here, so.
Well, I'm trying to, I want to go to H.
Well, regardless of the other things that we've suddenly added all onto this, air duct cleaning and SAU, we need to go back to the phones, to the fire alarm and the duct and the air handlers and finish that job and pass it regardless of what else we do. We need to finish the job that we started. These other things we can take one at a time, but can we please go back to those two and pass them?
I'm very confused where we are.
I thought we already did.
We never voted on it, everybody, we got to get a grand list of what we need to do first, where the money's going to come, if it's coming out of grants, if it's coming out of the operating budget.
We have up to 17,000 out of the trust fund.
Okay, so we're done with that, right?
We're done with that.
Okay, I just want to make sure because, all right, and Peg brought, didn't Peg bring it up again for additional?
No.
Additional was covered.
It was another sheet of paper, Paul?
I'm completely confused.
Paul, it was another sheet of paper with some more figures on it, that it was not clear from that, that it was on something else that we had already figured out. So I will apologize for that, but I wanted to make sure we got all the money things, okay? So what I'm doing right now is...
Okay, I see right here.
Computers for $86,000, the grease trap for $10,900, the duct cleaning for $8,461, both buildings, and the paving at $56,000, comes up to $105,417. They say there are $105,000, yes. I don't know if you did any math on that, but I was trying very hard to make sure I got all of them.
But you are asking me to hold off on these votes until the end, so exactly we know what we needed. Still going to do the 125 for the 409 Chromebooks.
No, no.
It was only 100, or only 86, because we already had some from the grant, correct, Jen?
From the CARES Act.
CARES Act, yes. No, no, not the CARES Act.
From different, different grants.
Okay, different, but there's a grant covering it.
Correct, grants covering, not the CARES Act.
Combined, yeah.
So we needed to fund $86,000.
Correct.
The air handler...
It's done.
...trust fund, sorry, grease trap was $10,900, the duct cleaning was $8,461 for both buildings.
Now, Nate?
Maybe less because of MES, right, Bob?
What?
What was that total?
Okay, Bob, are you on now?
Yeah, go ahead.
The duct cleaning, the original was $8,461, but if you have it done while they're doing the air handle, you think MES will be a little bit less, not much, but...
Right, just a little bit less, right.
Okay, and then the paving was $56,000.
Peg?
What?
Nate suggested that we hold off until next meeting on the paving and the grease trap, to see if we can get a better quote. And Bob agreed.
Okay.
Okay, now...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we want to do the air handle, I mean, the duct work now, and where do you want to take it out of?
Operating budget.
We talked about the air duct cleaning?
Yes.
Yes, which is $8,461.
I thought, we said it was in the operating budget already, I did write that down.
Next year it is.
For next year.
We want to do it this year.
Either way, it's getting done.
Yeah, this year.
Let's make a motion to take care of the air handle duct work.
I will make a motion to spend up to $8,500 to do the duct cleaning at both newt and MES.
I second.
No, not a duct cleaning, okay, all right. $8,500?
$8,500.
Okay, who's got a second?
To do duct cleaning at MES and newt.
And newt.
Is that right, Bob? We all set with that?
Who seconded that, I'm sorry?
I did.
Thank you.
Melissa?
Melissa, all right. Okay, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Melissa, Emily, I mean, I'm sorry. Okay.
Aye, can you hear me?
Oh, I heard that, Emily, she said aye.
Out of the operating budget, that's done. Okay, let's go back to the 56 for paving and the 1090 for the grease trap. Do we want to put it on the next meeting, like Nate suggested? We might get a better deal.
I have no problem with that.
Can I make a motion that we move the paving and the grease trap to the, we're going to make a decision if we want to meet on the 23rd? Do we want to meet on the 23rd?
Yes.
All right, so I make a motion that we move it to the 23rd.
I'll second that.
All right, let's see if we get a better deal. Okay.
Okay, now what do we do about the computers?
Do we, do you guys, we only had Doug and Peg, does everybody else have to agree?
Aye.
Melissa, Paul?
I heard Emily.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to the computers and get that out of the way. We've got $358,000 in the end of the year in the operating...
I make a motion that we fund the $86,000 for the computers this year out of the operating budget.
I'll second that.
To fund...
Look at, Tabby?
So it's a motion to fund the computer, the $86,000 for the computers out of the what, trust fund?
Operating budget.
Operating.
This is going to be a problem. Okay. Aye, Peg?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Paul's gone.
I guess it'll be an aye, I guess, I don't know. Okay, so the budgets, the computers are taken care of. Jennifer?
Thank you, I'll get quotes.
All right, so that takes care of everything, but do we want to go back to financials? Let's go back to financials. What's that? Has everybody due the operating budget?
Yes, and I sent everybody my questions or the email and the questions that I sent to Nathan with his replies. Primarily, I will jump ahead, but I asked the questions because I presented the budget committee, and they always look at anomalies. And Nate does a really good job responding to my questions and my crazy questions, so I don't know, Nate, if you want to join anything?
Well, I was just going to give a quick summary of it, if you want to go into detail.
No, I don't care about detail, I did send the email to everybody for their reading pleasure.
So basically, the ending balance of the expense report went down $32,000, and $25,000 was from, of that $32,000 was from the books that we've encumbered, the, I mean, the math books.
So what's the new figure now, Nate?
So for right now, it is, it's the $358,000, like you said.
Okay, all right.
And just to give you, just for comparison, last year at this time, we were at $108,000 left, so we're doing pretty good.
Okay, all right. Any more questions on the operating budget? That was page 11 to page 36. Page 37 to 38, revenue report, do I have any questions? Okay, the monthly grant report, page 39 to 43, do I have any questions?
That was, yeah, that was just a real easy one because, on page three of that or page 41, I asked Nate what CSI stood for? Because I recognized all of the others, and Nate?
Comprehensive School Improvement.
Yeah.
Thanks, Nate.
You're welcome. Do you know the answer?
I did, yeah.
Yeah, you did reply to the answer.
Of course you did.
Is that it?
That was the only question I had on the grants.
The treasures report for the month of July 2019, page 44 to 46, any questions? Nate?
I just want to explain that at the beginning of the year with the new system, we had a glitch in balances going forward for the reconciliations for July and August, and that's why you're getting these now, as opposed to throughout the whole year, but now that it has been fixed, you're going to be seeing a bunch of these the next couple of months.
We all set? August, page 47 to 50, any questions on that treasures report? Moving on. 51 to 56, and that would be for September's treasures report. Any questions? Okay, food services for April 2020, page 57 and 58, any questions? Peg?
Just how are we doing, Nate? We're here too.
Currently, we're at a deficit of $13,750. Compared to last year, we're at $33,875, so we're doing very well.
Can you give that figure again, that last one?
$33,875.
$875, that was last year.
That was last year's, yeah.
Okay, this year. Anybody else got any questions, Peg?
Just to follow, any other questions, Peg? Just to follow up, so that is less money that we're spending from the operating budget, right, Nathan?
Potentially, yes, yeah.
Can I just say something?
Go ahead, Melissa.
The meals have had multiple benefits financially to any of the families like myself who are home, have children home, or eating them out of house and home. These meals help a lot. There's continued contact between the bus drivers and the parents and, you know, the students, and they, I know for a fact, my children look forward to seeing these people on the three days a week. And my children enjoy the meals, they really do enjoy the meals, so I think it has been a great project, and I'm glad that we are part of this.
So we all set? Moving on. Age 58, which is the balance of the trust fund. Okay, I have a request for Nate. From, can you do something in the future, you do your report, can you also include Karen's report from her every month in that?
You mean this right here?
Only that portion that pertains to the school. That's what I would like to see in the future, okay? Because that would give us the true figure, which is in that...
Yeah, okay, all right.
Okay, page 60, do we have to vote on this to approve this schedule?
No, it's just informational.
Okay, that's 60. Okay, we've done the air, page 61, we've done that, 64, we've done that. Okay, okay, no, that takes care of that. Now I go back to, that's, the financial reports are done.
No.
What's left?
The audit for last year.
Okay, say it.
This booklet.
Everybody read this?
Yes.
There's a test.
Okay.
I have a question, Nate.
Okay, Nate, Nate has a request for you also. Tomorrow between 10 and 1, he's going to sign the manifest, when you're, if you're available. We need three signatures.
Please.
All right, I'm off tomorrow, I can do it.
Thank you.
10 and 1. Okay, moving on to the 4A, I think we need to meet one more time in June.
I will make a motion that we meet on the, what did you say, the 24th, it's a Thursday?
No.
No.
Wednesday, the 23rd, because we can't get the building on the 24th, but we can get it on the 23rd, and I've already talked to Steve and he said he can be available.
In general, I talked to Al, and General already signed it out.
Okay?
Okay, I have a problem that I, June 23rd, darn, I wasn't even thinking. I have a budget committee meeting that same night.
Me, I put in specifically to have Wednesdays off, though I can make the meetings.
Well, the reason we can't have it is because the library trustees threw us out.
Yeah.
I have no control over that. I even think we were signed up, because we hadn't removed it yet from the schedule, from what I understood, from cap.
Let me...
Do you need a meeting room? Need an actual room? Well, we need the TV room, we need the community room for the TVs so the public can watch it. We can't meet at the cafeteria.
Do we have the TV that, like on a cart? That rolls?
It is on a cart.
Steve, are you there? How difficult would it be to move that TV to, what room would we go to?
We can move it into any room, we can move it to a classroom if you want.
You want to still hold the 24th? I have no problem with that.
I would like to, only, only because of the budget committee.
Can we put it, Steve, in the art room?
Yeah.
The fence, the art room?
I have no problem with that.
Bob has his fingers up.
Where's Bob? What are you doing, Bob? Go ahead.
Yeah, can we, can we pick the room, just set the date? We know where, we just need to pick the room. Jane and I figured out with Stephen.
Yeah.
We got to post it, though, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, so it's okay with the 24th? I make a motion, we still meet on the 24th. Peg?
Second.
Okay, aye, Peg?
Aye.
Aye.
Emily? Melissa? Okay, all right, the room will be announced.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on, scoreboard.
That'd be me, right?
That's you, Bob. That's you, Bob. Everything's got your name on it.
Hey, come on, drumroll. Let's go. Alright.
What's happening?
I wanted, I wanted to let you know, Pat Smith, because he had some projects he needed to do in the town with a small excavator, has rented that excavator. And this week here, we were able to dig the hole for the foundation. So we've got that done. Jim Flanagan, JNS Tech Electric, one of his technicians is gonna actually do the forming. We have the material for the forming, and that'll be when he can do it, basically. But, you know, we'll probably get it done in the next couple of weeks. All of this is volunteer work, so it gets done when people have time. But we do, like I said, have the material for the forms. So once it gets formed up, then we'll be able to schedule the concrete work, let it cure. And then we, the school board had bought the posts, remember? Two posts on the school board, out of the operating budget. We already have the paint and prep for the paint, and I need to paint those posts. So incrementally, we're moving along, but at least we get the hole done now.
Great, hopefully it doesn't rain and fill in.
I know.
You have anything?
Who was the electric company, Bob?
JNS Tech Electric.
Thank you.
Anything on the scoreboard? We all set?
No, I have a quick question for Bob. If you pour concrete, only because I'm obviously not an engineer, but you poured the foundation, you know, the concrete in for the foundation, but you haven't put the posts in yet, where do you put the posts? I mean, they, dumb question maybe, because I don't understand, but...
Yeah, what happens is, is we make a template of the post, of the anchor bolts that are, of the pattern that's on the bottom of the posts. And then we suspend the anchor bolts from templates on each of the two sonotubes, and that gets embedded into the concrete. And that's where we anchor the, that's where the anchor of those posts are.
Okay, as long as you know what you're doing. Thank you, Bob. Good job. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Move it on, to Milton Elementary, Walk-in Refrigerator. It's you again, Bob.
Sure. And the walk-in refrigerator, I put this on here just in case it was gonna look like big money. Right now, it's gonna be, you know, typical repairs that we would do. The refrigerator is shut off now, because we're not using it. And we'll start it up July sometime and do the repairs that need to happen, and that'll come out of next year's budget.
Before I move to the next one, we're gonna meet the 24th. So we want to move the paving and the grease trap to the money, the 24th agenda, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll do so. I'll take care of that tomorrow. Okay. Moving on to Policies, ADC.
Oh my god.
This'll be the first reading. You want to do them as a group or singly?
Well, I just want to say, that's basically the same thing as it's been. Were there any changes?
I couldn't find many.
I could either.
So do we want, do we want to do all of these as a group?
Well, I have questions on a couple of them. That was the only one that I had no questions on.
Okay, give me a motion to accept, to send it to the second reading.
I'll make a motion to send ADC to second reading.
Second it.
Second.
Second. Put Paul down. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Second reading. I'll take care of that. Okay. You have a question on EBCA?
Actually, both of these, because do we have an emergency response plan that we actually review? I mean, I don't think I've ever seen one as a school board member.
Jan, didn't you do one? Are you talking about, like, fire drills and stuff, like a school emergency plan?
Yeah, you got that.
Got one done.
We have one for each building.
So that's been done.
Okay, thank you, then. Then both of those, I have no problem with.
I make a motion to page 93 and 94, for the, send to the second meeting. Peg?
Second. You made the motion, Doug.
I didn't?
Sure.
Okay, alright. Aye?
Aye.
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 I think I got everybody, okay, alright, thank you. Moving on. The next one is FEH.
Okay, and I had a question on that one, too. I mean, obviously, we've not had any million-dollar projects. So I'm basically just asking, Bob, are you the superintendent? No. You are the construction clerk?
Clerk of the works.
Clerk of the works, Bob?
Yeah, basically, I am. And what we've done before is, we usually, we'd have the talent over an architectural or engineering firm, providing some sets of eyes at some strategic points along the path. We wouldn't have a clerk of the works, because we don't have a project now, as you said, that would have a magnitude to warrant that.
But you're the one who does all of the other things there, though, okay?
Yes.
Okay, the only, okay, the only thing that bothers me in this statement, and I'm not just gonna say it's gonna be, but on B, after superintendent, who will determine whether or not it is the matter of the board's consideration? If the superintendent decides board consideration is not necessary, then the signature of the superintendent shall be considered board action. Superintendent, developing procedure to use relative to the need, the school, what to review. So if you have an order change, I think it needs to come before the board.
I agree, because that was something that I actually highlighted on this, was, what's the procedure to have it come to us?
We're a small enough school to know what's going on.
Yeah.
We have a Facilities Committee.
Ah, so Paul and Doug, you need to be...
I think the changes should go to the facility. Paul, you with me?
I agree.
Then go to the board.
Correct.
Yep.
So that's what I would like to see.
What we do with everything else.
That's fine.
I heard something, but I couldn't hear.
That's fine with me, Doug.
Go to the Facilities Committee.
Facilities Committee will develop a procedure to use relative to the board, to the need for the school board to review?
Then it should go to the board to okay it.
Just like everything else we do.
Yeah.
That last sentence is what you're saying, change to Facilities Committee.
On B.
Yes, that last sentence, no?
Who's talking, because I can't see no lips moving?
It's me, sorry.
Oh, okay, alright. Yeah, I think it should go to the Facilities Committee, then go to the board if there's any changes in their instruction. I make that a motion.
I will second that.
Oh, go ahead, Peg.
Peg. Now get that correction from you, Tammy, later. For the first reading with the correction. Doug, aye? Peg?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Okay, gone. Okay, page 96. Okay, the only thing, question I had, had a blank in there, and I don't know whose name goes in there. That's Teaching About Alcohol, Drugs, and Tobacco. Does anybody have any idea? As part of the Health Education Program for grades K through 9?
K through 12.
K through 12, I'm sorry.
Health teacher does it for middle school and high school. However, as long as we still have our social worker, substance abuse counselor, he does some of that work during Red Ribbon Week.
So we're all set to send this one forward to first, second meeting? Not fill in that spacing? I'll make a motion, we send it forward.
Second.
Go ahead.
Who seconded it? I heard two voices.
I'll let Paul do it.
Okay. Douglas S., Peg?
Yes.
Emily? Melissa?
Yeah.
Simple. Now we're on second meeting. This is the one Jan gave us last time. Do we need any corrections on it?
No, but you know what? I totally forgot, Jan, and I apologize. I just remembered that something went from a full credit to a half a credit, so something else could be added. Was that economics to communication tech?
Yeah. We didn't add anything else to the policy. We took a half credit off of computers, and that will allow her to teach computer programming classes. But the number, so it went from seven and a half to seven, and then down below, it's still a total of 16. It went, I want to say it was seven and a half went to eight. So you have now 16 and eight.
Yep. Okay, alright, good.
16 and a half and seven and a half. I'm sorry, I could not remember.
You're gonna, for the final reading, Peg, you, Peg, Garrett?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Doug, she, Peg?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Okay, it's the final reading. Okay, the next two are repeats. Job to withdraw them, I think. They're both the same as ADC.
Yes. My question on these, Doug, is that because of the beginning letter, they actually go into different parts of the policy book?
Yeah, we saw that when we went through it. You're correct.
So I don't know if we want to keep them?
Not up to me.
My recommendation is that we do. They seem redundant, but they're necessary.
Yeah, and as I said, because they're in two different, or three different areas of the policy book.
Do you make a motion, Peg, to keep them both?
Yes.
I'll second it. Any discussion? You got that, Tammy?
Yeah.
Page 98?
Yeah.
101, we're keeping them. Aye, Peg?
Aye.
Emily?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Paul? You guys are moving around. I'll keep track of you. Okay. Now, M, GBA is Employment Opportunity. I guess they want it for withdrawal, I guess, from what I understand. It's on the back of the form?
Yeah, I did not understand that.
Neither did I. So do we want to keep that one?
Yeah, it's the country use thing, equal op. You know, that's what all schools have.
Right, but the back of this is absolutely strange. And it just says it was withdrawn November 2019, replaced with ACGA. So maybe we kind of really need to look into this and see what the story is.
No, it's telling you, on the back, it is telling you that we have other existing policies in place that cover it better than this one little policy.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay.
So we want to keep it or get rid of it?
Get rid of it.
Okay, I make a motion to withdraw.
I'll second it.
Let me get it down.
Which one are you withdrawing? I'm sorry, I'm confused. You're withdrawing?
GBA.
You're withdrawing GBA?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because on the back, John, it says it's been replaced with ACGA.
This is from the School Board Association, not our policy book.
Well, the front isn't our policy book. We're withdrawing from our policy.
This is what we have.
We're withdrawing that. We don't need it.
Do we have others?
Yes.
Read the back.
Do we have ACGA in our policy book? Okay.
See, this is from the School Board Association. This is a, I thought this isn't something that we wrote up, right?
Right, but if they sent us ACGA, or whatever it is, I think we need to look into this one and make sure that we do have at least a policy in our book.
This one. GBA. Okay, yeah, put it back on. Check it out.
So GBA, I just went on to, on the website, it says GBA was adopted on the board on February 28, 2001. Is that the paper you have, Peg?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there's something on the back?
Yeah.
What's, there's nothing on the website on the back. What is, is there a number or anything at the top?
It just says that it was withdrawn from the New Hampshire School Board Association in 2019 and replaced with ACGA. And my question is, do we have ACGA in our policy book?
No, we do not.
ACGA?
ACGA, we do not have.
Nope. Okay, then this needs to be looked into and find out what policy ACGA is.
Take care of that.
Yes?
Yes, we don't have ACGA.
Thank you, Jen.
And this one's out of date, too, so we should look at those.
Yep.
Okay, the next two. I don't know what they want done with them.
I thought we had already looked at these.
We did.
Adopted by the board, March 13, 2019. I mean, I remember looking at these.
Yes, we did.
So how did they get back in here?
I don't know. I didn't put them in.
I would just say that they go back into the policy book and...
We're not making any changes, so we don't need to do anything with them.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Okay, I put this one on, and then, my concern is about signing contracts. It says at the end, "The board authorized the chairperson to sign all contracts." Is that the policy we want, or what do we want? I don't know.
I thought we discussed this one before, too.
No, we didn't. We never made a decision. I never brought it forward.
Were you talking about LEB?
No, DJE. Page 108.
Okay.
108.
And it was adopted in 2000?
I say we have the chairman sign it after we, the board's approved everything.
Yeah, we did approve that. I just want the board to be aware of that.
You approved it in 16.
Okay, alright.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
Alright, okay.
That one's okay.
Sure for grants. I don't know who put that one in.
It's information only, and it's like, we didn't have anything?
I don't know. I didn't put that one in there, I don't think.
Is that just assurances that need to be signed?
Well, I think...
We already signed them. So maybe we're just letting you know Doug already signed them?
Yeah.
So they've already been signed to say, so there had to be, so just out of the update, there was assurances for next year's accepting funding, and then the assurances had to be signed to accept the CARES Act, and we had agreed at the public hearing to accept it all, so they just got signed and submitted the state.
We signed the grant form.
Yep.
Okay, the next thing, 109, this was 109. Okay, the Voting Report, okay, that's that sheet. After them, we approved the CBA. This is the guidelines that we have to follow. We have to have a special election. That's page 109, okay?
Yeah, and Doug, I had a question that I forgot to ask you when I was speaking with you today. Did you actually email this so I could email it to Mary Ann? Because I looked through all of my emails and...
You got it now. You got a copy right there.
Well, I know, but how am I gonna email it, darling?
What do you mean, how are you gonna email it?
Email it to Mary Ann.
Well, who's gonna mail her the new figures for the contract?
That can be emailed. That can be emailed, because it's online.
Well, that should be photographed and emailed. Couldn't it not be?
Which one do you want to send her? What page? Because I can do it.
109?
You give it to her. Okay. Does that page, 109?
109, it's the special school district meeting under RSA. Then you just tell her that, what it is. It's from our attorney and the RSA.
Okay, that, that P, what that was, I talked to, uh, uh, on the voting. It looks like the voting is gonna be done from a vehicle presently. So when you have that election, it's probably gonna be voting from a vehicle per Chris Jacobs, that's the way towns have been doing it. When you have a special election. Okay, going on, I think, Tammy, you're up.
Going back, that's what Doug's, I talked to the superintendent, Bo, and Bo, uh, they had one, and Hopkinton had one, too. And Doug and I had talked about it, and I, I had a long conversation with the fellow from Bo, and, uh, Bo's went very well. So, uh, I, I think we can pull, I think we can pull that off.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Earl. Okay, the next one is Q, and Tammy Crandall, you're up.
I'm up. So the YouTube, actually, Steve's been, um, sending it um, to me, um, and I've just been uploading it to Facebook right now, until we get everything all situated. That's how we wanted to, I guess that's how it was discussed, we should do that. So that's all that I've been doing, is upload, is uploading, um, it to Facebook. As far as the Facebook page, I don't know, I believe I invited everybody on here and now have over 100 people on it. And it does not have any commenting on it, I have, I have to put it on and then I have to go and click on it to make sure that I, it says no commenting. So all right, I, it looks as if it's, and sounds as if it's been doing okay. Um, I haven't had any commenting, thank, obviously. And, um, I've been uploading things, a lot of things, as you could see. But that's all I gotta say.
Are you all set? Anybody?
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to make sure everybody knew, unless everybody has any comments or anything that they'd like me to, to do otherwise.
No, I think it looks good, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything under old business? Anybody?
What happened to special meeting time scheduled, Doug?
That was really just, I took it out of order, that was this thing.
Okay, all right, never mind.
It was 109. Okay, no old business? Committee, board?
Well, the only thing I have to report is we did have a very quick, um, budget committee meeting, and Tom McDougall stepped down as chair, he is vice chair. And, um, Humphrey Williams is now the chair. And we have three new people on the board this year, and I did send the, their email addresses to Nate so that he can send them the reports, um, and we are meeting on the 23rd. Uh, as of this point, I have no idea what's happening, but wanted to have it at the town hall rather than Zoom, and I've already said that I am very uncomfortable going into the building. So I very well may just call in and do my whatever from that perspective, because they're just barely opening up on Fridays by appointment only, and, you know, people in the town hall are concerned with their own well-being. So anyway, so that is it as far as the budget committee.
Okay, so I guess I need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
I'm pretty sure going to RSA 91.
I say that, Peg.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. Hey, Peg, can you check your text message?
Oh, later. Okay.
RSA 91832ABC. L, J, and K. Uh, aye?
Aye.
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 To adjourn.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm second.
Second.
Who was that?
Emily.
Oh, Emily, your lips didn't move, I can't read. Peg?
Aye.
Emily? Melissa?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh, thank you, Doug, thank you, everybody.